Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of July 8, 2025. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance, and I'll ask our General Counsel Mark Silberman to call the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Chu.
Here.
Ginsburg.
Here.
Mr. Goldblum. Commissioner Ifembe.
Yeah.
Mr. Jefferson.
Here.
Mahan. Your master.
Here.
Your Wilder.
Here.
All right. Good morning again, and welcome to the Public Hearing and Public Meeting of July 8. This meeting is being held in the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing Room on the second floor of 253 Broadway. It is also being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to watch the proceedings. We have a full agenda today of applications for new, uh, new applications for work on designated properties. And with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala, to take us through the agenda.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll start today's Preservation Department Agenda with Public Hearing Item Number One, LPC 25-09048, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of the Bronx, Block 5924, Lot 480, 4695 Independence Avenue, the Greystone Gatehouse Individual Landmark. This is a picturesque-style cottage attributed to James Renwick Jr. and Joseph Sands and built in 1863 to 68. The application is to construct an addition and replace roofing materials.
My name is Hal Dorfman. I'm the architect of this project, and I represent the owners, Blanche Baker and Mark McGill, who are the present stewards of the Greystone Cottage, which is the gatehouse or what was the Dodge Estate. This property was landmarked as an individual landmark in 2011. It was designed by the architects Renwood and Sands. The project represents a fairly intact, though aged, structure. They have endeavored to maintain this structure since they've owned it over the last decade and more. They have -- the picture you're looking at right now on the screen represents the present lot on the, the left side, and these are the photographs from the designation report. The building is basically a clapboard building with some stylish, kind of shipwright molding on the, the gables. It's a, has a jerkin head gable end, which is kind of a unique prop, um, feature for this property. It has fancy shingles, some diamond shape and some rectangular. Um, let's, up, or next? Up, no. Okay. Um, okay. Uh, the picture in the upper, uh, left-hand corner is Mr. McGill, and this is the impetus for this small, modest addition that they are applying for. Um, the staircase within the house is a very narrow staircase, and it's getting more and more difficult to, um, to navigate to the second floor. And we're trying to put a small addition on the north side of the house for an accessible suite on the ground floor. They would like to, as most of us would age in place of their home. Um, this is, um, a small montage of the screep scape, and you can see the arrows marking, um, and the diagram on the lower left, how it's taken. The upper, um, montage represents it during the summer. Um, as compared to the original designation, which was almost 15 years ago, um, the vegetation has matured. It's pretty much, uh, it's on a corner piece of property, but it's pretty much shielded from public view during, uh, the summer. In the winter, it's a little bit more exposed, but, um, as you can see, it is, there's still a lot of vegetation and branches that obstruct the view of the building from the street. It's also on a very quiet corner on Independence and West 247 Street. Um, in this, um, series of photographs, we endeavor to show, uh, as outlined by the red, um, uh, circle, where the addition would be if you could see it through the vegetation. Um, this is a before and after photograph. The one on the left is showing, um, not really showing much. It's what it looks like today, where the building is through the trees. And the one on the right is the proposed addition, where we've removed some of the vegetation and show, um, what the addition would look like from the north side. It's pretty much identical to what the house looks like today, except it just telescopes out 14 feet to accommodate, um, the one-room, um, suite on the first floor for the owners. We're trying to take a minimum approach to this in terms of design. We're not really changing any of the aesthetic, any of the details, from the window brick molds to the jerkin head, which we're repeating, uh, including the, the shingle design on the roof. Um, this is a basic, um, floor plan, um, showing, uh, in the middle, the suite on the first floor. We're creating, that right now, they have a two-fixter bathroom with the washer and dryer, and we've relocated that into a small closet and, uh, created a, a, a walk-in shower in its space. Of the upstairs space just represents the area under the gable roof. And as you can see, the tiny staircase, um, in the middle on the left side in the front. These series of next few sheets are, um, the existing elevations and the proposed elevations. This is a series of all four elevations at once. Um, the next will be, um, well, the significance, sorry, I'm going to go back, the significance of this, it, it, the dash line on the, the two, um, elevations on the left represent the existing dwelling, and, um, the dash line represents the change where we're proposing to extend the house. Um, this is, um, similar, except now it's delineated, showing the materials and the textures in relation to the present house. Um, this and the next two elevations basically show the same, but a side-by-side comparison of the existing and the proposed. One of the things that we're trying to do is, uh, in the north side of the house, there's a valley, and that, that valley is going to be where we're going to take as many of the existing shingles as possible and reuse them on the facade that faces Independence Avenue, um, so we can have a very similar appearance from what would be the most accessible view from the public thoroughfare. Again, this is a side-by-side comparison. This is the rear of the house, and, and Fred and, and I and Jarrett worked very carefully to delineate, um, the rear, the rear, or would be the north elevation. We even set back the small little angle, as you can see, right next to the door. We even set it back a few inches just to keep the symmetry of the gable end on the house. And this is showing the house from the west side, which is pretty much shielded. It faces another property and a stand of, of, of evergreen trees. Um, this is a, a three-dimensional massing, showing, um, I'm sorry, it's, um, showing, um, the existing massing, uh, the northeast view in the top left-hand corner, what it would look like with, um, the addition in the upper right, and the same, uh, the northwest massing in the lower left, and, um, the northwest massing after the addition on the right. If there's any questions, please stop me along the way, or I can go back afterwards. Thank you. Um, this is a, a large-scale elevation, um, of the north of the house. We've tried to replicate as much of the detail. Uh, as a matter of fact, we're going to try to carefully remove, um, the fancy, uh, shipwright, uh, trim, if we can reuse it. If not, it will be recreated. Um, we're also going to use the similar molding, uh, the brick mold around the windows. Um, uh, we're also replicating, uh, the pattern of the double-hung windows, six over six, I, no, six over six on the second floor, and the small window on the, um, the nor, uh, on the west side will be four over four to match the adjacent window. Um, the photographs on the upper right represent, um, the present condition of the shingles, as you can see, they're in quite bad condition. Um, we consulted with the, um, the craftsman who has been maintaining the roof for the present owners, and he was the one who recommended that we use this Da Vinci, um, uh, molded shingle. They're much different than they were 15 or 20 years ago. They're actually three-dimensional now, and they have a, um, kind of a honeycomb grid on the back, which prevents them from buckling or, um, sagging, uh, with the sun and age. And, um, I believe, next photograph, they, they, they pretty much, the color palette is almost identical to the present shingles, and, and they come in a variety of size, so we're able to take the middle, uh, of those five on the top and, and form a diamond-shaped shingle and, and rotate it, uh, 45 degrees and pretty much match. And we're going to try to limit this to, to the, um, primarily the west facade, which is the least visible facade for many public thoroughfare. Um, a little hard to read all the, the details, but, um, we also are, are going to use smooth hardy plank, so to match the smooth, um, clapboard that's there now, again, on recommendation and consultation with the staff. I believe this is the last sheet, which just, um, details, uh, the window and the brick mold around the window. Uh, I believe it's reversed in terms of what's above and what's below. The upper window is the actual first-floor window on the west facade, and the lower window, the six over six, is the upper window over the door on the north facade. Um, and with that, um, you know, the owners have authorized me to, if we have to work out any of these minor details that the commission may have with the staff, um, we can consult and discuss that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see if we have any questions. Does anyone have any questions on this item? All right. Not seeing any questions, we'll move to public testimony, and then we'll come back to you. And I will note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Michelle Carron to see if we have any remote participants.
Okay. Um, anyone in the Zoom meeting who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Right, so. Um, first, we have Christina Conroy. I've elevated you to panelist. Um, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes to speak.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, founded in New York City in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th-century heritage. The New York chapter promotes and preserves our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interiors, and civic art. Now, the Victorian Society supports this relatively modest addition to the Greystone Gatehouse. Its scale, proportions, and details are all in harmony with the original building and do not overwhelm it. However, on an individual landmark, an addition designed in the style of the original needs to match the original historic materials. The roof must be real slate, and the siding must be wood clapboard. Substitute materials are not appropriate in this case. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we have Kaylee Johnson. Uh, I have promoted, promoted you to panelist. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson. I'm with the Historic Districts Council. HDC finds the proportions and massing of the proposed addition to be appropriate. The designation report for the Greystone Gatehouse mentions the irregular massing as being an important architectural feature, and this addition maintains that condition. The designation report also mentions the polychrome slate shingles as being a characteristic feature. Therefore, we believe that the applicant should use real slate to match the original roofing materials. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I don't see any additional hands raised at this time, um, so I would note that Bronx Community Board Eight recommends approval.
All right. Thank you. Would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard?
We would have liked to use original slate. The problem is that the man who maintains this building, who has maintained it for the last 15 years, is recommending against that. Um, he's recommending that, over time, the entire building should be changed to the new product, and it would maintain the integrity, color, design of the original design, but in more modern materials. I, I don't think we build jets out of wood anymore, even though the White Brothers built them out of wood, and they did fly. We use aluminum or carbon fiber today. The same with the siding material. Uh, once it's painted, it will be indistinguishable from, uh, the wood clapboards that's there. And today, with rainscreen and insulated, we still have, we do not get a pass on this project in terms of the energy code, and we still have to maintain a rainscreen and a continuous insulation barrier around this, and we have to make it still look like what it looked like 150 years ago. So with that.
All right. Thank you. Any final questions, Commissioners? All right. So let's, uh, move to our discussion. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Master. Would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we are looking at this, uh, proposed addition to the building, which, um, as we've seen, will follow the details and style of the house and will be clad in a hardy fiber cement board, and the, we'll use a synthetic slate material to replicate the slate shingles. And, uh, just to provide some context on substitute materials, this commission has recognized the, the benefits of substitute materials in certain cases, and certainly on buildings within historic districts that are, that contain freestanding houses. We have approved alternate materials, particularly on additions, but even on the main houses. And, uh, we have also supported substitute materials in the past on individual landmarks as well, uh, depending on the conditions. So this is an addition that, um, is, uh, partially concealed, um, and at the back of the, sort of the north end of the, I guess, the top of the property. And, uh, the applicant has said for now they are going to limit the shingles to the, try to limit it to the west elevation, which is the least visible in the addition. So we'll begin our discussion. Vice Chair Bland, would you start this one?
Certainly. Um, I don't know if anybody's ever visited the Dodge Estate, but what a amazing, um, history in the Bronx that that is. Um, I once had a tour. Stephen Burns, a former commissioner, um, lives in part of it. Um, I think this is, uh, a beautiful little cottage. I didn't know it, um, by a very important architect, uh, individually landmarked appropriately. I think the proposal is, uh, perfectly appropriate. Uh, I'm glad that, um, Chair Carroll has just, uh, reminded us of the, um, um, of our frequent approval of alternate materials, and I think among those alternate materials that we generally do approve, uh, fake slate, as I guess it's sometimes called, uh, is, uh, as the architect has mentioned, is, um, has improved a lot in, in its quality, uh, and, um, uh, so I think, I think in this case, even though it is a, um, an individual landmark, I think I can approve or suggest that I will vote for approval of, uh, of the entire package, including the hardy board, and compliment the architect for a very faithful job, you know. The, interestingly, the, the national standards that we do not have to approve, uh, uh, go by, would, would have suggested some sort of an, an, a, a look that was somewhat different, you know? We add new to old. But I think in this case, um, that would be inappropriate, at least in my, my eyes. So I think this is very, very well done, and I will vote to approve it.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Uh, I'm in agreement. Um, I think the applicant, um, did a very good job in, um, the detailing, the clarity of the, uh, the, the presentation, and I'm in agreement with the vice chair. Uh, this commission has approved many times this type of material, and I think this is discreet and, uh, low-key and very well done.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
I agree with my fellow commissioners and also want to compliment the applicant on meeting the energy code.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
Carefully done replication. I can approve it.
Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Bland's statements. It's appropriate.
Commissioner Chu.
Appropriate.
All right. Commissioner Akumbi.
I agree.
And Commissioner Wilder.
Um, I agree. I have one question, though. I'm, uh, interested in understanding, what does the roof look like from transitioning from the old slate to the new slate?
No. Um, Corey, I don't know if you or Fred can answer that now that we're in a public meeting session. That's okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the applicants were able to obtain actual samples of the substitute material and lay them on the roof next to the historic slate roofing. And in terms of both the, the size and the appearance, texture, color, et cetera, uh, it actually was a good match, and, uh, the applicants are confident that they can continue that pattern as it transitions from the existing roof to the new roof, and staff agrees in terms of what we've seen so far.
And I think, in our experience, the, these fake slate tiles or shingles are actually individual shingles and are installed in the same way that original slate shingles would be installed, so there wouldn't be a transition to a different type of installation that might be noticeable. Okay.
Approved.
Okay, great. All right. So I think we have a consensus. Vice Chair Bland, would you make the motion?
Of course. Uh, in the matter of 4695 Independence Avenue, the Greystone Gatehouse, an individual landmark, uh, this is an application to construct an addition and to replace roofing materials. I recommend approval, noting that the construction of the proposed addition will reuse at a distance from limited views from the street, that the form and massing of the addition will extrude from the existing gable end wall of the house and will not overwhelm the house or diminish its character-defining irregular massing, that the design details and ma, and materials of the proposed addition, featuring gray-painted horizontal, um, fiber cement siding, uh, at the lower portion, and vertical fiber cement siding, uh, and battens at the upper portion, decorative wood gable, um, verge boards and trim, multi-light wood windows and doors, and pattern-simulated slate roofing will match or harmonize with the existing details and materials of the house, that the proposed windows and doors of the house, of the addition will be consistent with the configurations, proportions, and details of the existing windows at the house, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of this individual landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Chair Bland.
Aye.
Chair Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Akumbi.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
Mr. Wilder.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
All right. That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is Public Hearing Item Number Two, LPC 25-10609, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Block 243, Lot 46, 126 Pierpont Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is an Anglo-Italianate-style row house built in 1860. The application is to install a balcony at the rear facade.
Hi, my name is Sarah Sang. I'm an architect at Lubrano-C of Our Architects, and I want to thank the committee for holding this meeting. Um, the proposal we'll be discussing today is situated at 126 Pierpont Street in Brooklyn Heights. It's a three-family brownstone, and our proposal consists of a full-width metal and stone balcony at the non-visible rear facade off the second floor. Uh, as you can see, in the area outlined in the blue dash, that's our area of work, which is not visible from any public way. Images one, two, three, and four are taken from around the block. As you can see, there is, uh, it's a fully obstructed view of the house, and in image number five, that is the existing, uh, rear facade, off of which we're proposing our full-width balcony. For historic reference, these are two Sanborn maps. The first dated in 1898, the second in 1904, with our site outlined in the red, uh, dash. Here is a series of historic photographs of the front facade, the first taken in 1940, the second in 1980, and the third, present day. There is no work proposed at the front of the house. Here's a collection of existing built full-width balconies, visible from a public way in the Landmarks District of Brooklyn Heights. Um, note that all are constructed of metal, uh, with the supporting structure and the railing are, are all metal structure. Um, in image number one is a view of 142 Columbia Heights. You can see a full-width fourth-floor balcony, uh, visible from the Brooklyn Heights promenade. In image number two, you see 162 Columbia Heights with two full-width balconies, um, at the second and third floors. In image three, you see 192 Columbia Heights from the promenade, a second-floor balcony there. In the fourth image is 212 Columbia Heights from the promenade, another second-floor balcony. Uh, image number five shows 216 and 218 Columbia Heights from the promenade, two full-width, uh, second-floor balconies. And finally, image number six shows a view of 44 Remsen Street from Grace Court, another fourth-floor, uh, balcony off the rear. Here's a series of existing photos, uh, of our proposed area of work. The first image shows, uh, view of the rear facade. Uh, the second is a close-up of the second level, off which we're proposing our balcony. The third is looking back, um, towards the rear yard, and, uh, images four and five show the neighbors', uh, side facades. Note, in the fourth image, of the east, uh, side facade, that is a five-story wall, and then opposite is the west, which is a four-story wall. Here you can see our, uh, demolition and construction elevations of the rear. Uh, we're proposing to remove the, uh, nonhistoric Juliet balconies on the second level and, uh, replace with a full-width, uh, balcony that runs straight across, totaling in length of 22 feet and 7 inches, held off from the neighboring properties 14 inches on either side. zoning requires, at upper floors, that, uh, balconies be set back from the rear property line, no less than 30 feet. Um, our existing rear facade is set back 32 foot 9 inches, and so our proposed balcony projects a total of 2 foot 9. Our structural support system was designed to minimally impact, impact the existing historic rear facade, uh, with eight penetrations of only 3/4-inch diameter threaded rod, tying the new balcony into the existing house's structure, and, and no other architecture, architectural elements will be affected and to remain as existing. And no other architectural elements will be affected and to remain as existing. This is an illustration of our proposal. And similar to the precedents you saw earlier, we're proposing a material for the supporting structure and railing that is to be painted black metal and the decking to be flamed bluestone slab. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
On the structural detail, it looks like there's a pad. Is that a thermal break pad? Because I think you need one, and I just wanted to confirm.
That, yeah. Are you talking about the flange here?
Right.
Yes, there will be a thermal break.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, on the lower balcony with the stair, is there a structure or post?
There is a post. There's two posts.
Can you just show where that is?
So one is posting down to an existing retaining wall, and the other is right beneath the stair.
Okay. And not on the right side?
The right side is an existing shed with--
Oh, okay. There's the mass right there.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? We'll move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? All right. Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Michelle Carron to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. Anyone who is in Zoom who would like to testify, please use the raise hand function. We do have one sign up ahead of time. Right. So first, we have Judy Stanton. I have promoted you to panelist. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record and unmute yourself.
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We support this proposal. The proposed second-story balcony is an appropriate change from the existing configuration. The project's lead architect, Anne Marie Livano, is a member of our committee, and she did not participate in our evaluation of this project nor in the preparation of this testimony. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Seeing no additional hands raised, I'll note that Brooklyn CB2 waived review due to CB recess.
All right, thank you. So it's supportive testimony. I don't know if there's any final statement you'd like to make before we move to our discussion. And commissioners, any final questions? All right, thanks. We'll move to our discussion then. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we're looking at this balcony. I think the balcony at the lower level is actually eligible for staff-level review. So we're really looking at the balcony at the upper level, which is something that currently the staff is not authorized to approve. This is a one-off row house that's really hemmed in by two other houses with deeper side walls, and so it's not part of a continuous row. I think that's something you can consider as you evaluate this. Commissioner, yes? Because of what floor it's on, the staff can only do up to the parlor floor. All right. Commissioner Chen, would you start this one?
Yeah, I mean, I love the detailing. I think the applicant did a-- I was wondering why this is not a staff-level approval. Eleven commissioners looking at this. But I think it's very, very well done.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Totally agree, and a really good presentation.
Yeah, very good. Commissioner Jefferson?
Very well done.
Commissioner Master?
Appropriate.
Does everybody agree, or any other additional thoughts?
Appropriate.
All right, we'll ask Commissioner Chen to make the motion, and then we'll do the vote.
In the matter, LPC 25-10609, 126 Pierpont Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The application is to install a balcony at the rear facade, noting the building's style, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed balcony will not be visible from any public furor fear, that the rear facade is deeply recessed between two buildings that project further into the central green space. Therefore, the presence of a balcony of this width, projection, and location will not detract from the building's relationship with adjacent buildings, that the placement and design of the second-floor balcony will be in keeping with other rear balconies found on buildings on this historic district, that the materiality of the balcony, featuring black finish, metal framing and railing, and bluestone decking will harmonize with the building's existing Juliet balconies and proposed rear yard deck, that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or historic district.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Akumbe?
Aye.
Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC 25-07440, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 27, lot 7501, One Main Street in the Dumbo Historic District. This is an industrial neoclassical-style factory building designed by William Higginson and built in 1914. The application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows.
Good morning. Cosmo Veneziale Architect. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The clock tower condominium located at One Main Street in the Dumbo Historic District was an original Robert Gare factory building converted to residential use in 1998 by David Willentis of Two Trees Development Corporation. The building was built in 1914 by Turner Construction, and at the time, it was the largest reinforced concrete building in the United States, with 275,000 square feet of space. One Main Street is an industrial neoclassical reinforced concrete factory and warehouse, building designed by William Higginson, which had 3/3 steel industrial pivot and fixed sash windows, as did several other buildings located in the Dumbo Historic District. Our presentation references 40-58 Washington Street, 51-59 Washington Street, and 70 Washington Street. All of the aforementioned buildings have replaced almost all their original 3/3 steel industrial windows with 1/1 double-hung windows at the time of designation. Only two dozen or so original 3/3 steel industrial windows were cited as remaining for 40-58 and 51-59 Washington Street per the designation report. Presently, all the original 3/3 steel windows were replaced at the aforementioned buildings with new 1/1 aluminum replacement double-hung windows. Prior to 2007 designation report prepared by the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission, One Main Street had replaced all original windows with early-generation 1/1 aluminum and glass replacement double-hung windows. Our survey of the existing aluminum windows revealed a myriad of defects in design and installation. After decades of problems with the poor operation of the windows, the Board of Directors is now seeking a master plan to replace the existing defective windows with new 1/1 high-performance replacement aluminum and glass windows. Our proposed window design aligns the upper fixed sash frames with the lower dual-operation sash frames to resemble the original sash configuration. Given some of the existing oversized window sashes, typically four feet wide by eight foot high, with some windows five foot wide, the proposed dual-action lower sashes will afford residents the ability to open and clean their windows from the interior for the first time. We also want to note the zoning of the property includes an E designation from the New York City Office of Environmental Remediation, which has specific environmental requirements for interior noise, specifically for block number 27, lot number one, wherein the residential uses at One Main Street require a minimum 35 decibel interior sound rating. Our design addresses the required sound attenuation requirement by including 1 3/8 inch thick insulating glass units as part of the new window design, as well as fixed upper sashes, all done to meet the noise mitigation requirements. It is our goal to provide a window replacement design that will achieve the high-performance standards required for a high-end residential adaptive reuse project such as One Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Chu?
Is there, it's double-hung and is it a hopper? Is there another style that you've got? What are the operation styles of the windows?
The operation style of the--
The two types.
Proposed. Proposed would be a fixed upper sash and a lower sash, which has dual action, which is a tilt and turn.
Okay. I thought you said double-hung.
No.
Okay. That's existing.
That's existing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's see. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, we'll turn it over to Michelle Carron to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. Anyone in the Zoom meeting that would like to testify, please raise your hand. Right. First, we have Christina Conroy. I'll promote you to, promoting you to panelist. You have three minutes to speak. Please unmute yourself and state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, this building, as with so many early 20th-century factory buildings, is largely about its windows. They take up most of the facade area. And it's therefore very important for the window configurations to be historically correct. Now, in this case, we know from both photographs and the remaining original windows that the configuration should be 3/3. In other recent applications, we've seen the importance of returning to the original window configurations. The reinstatement of multi-light casement windows at Williamsburg Houses and Harlem River Houses are two excellent examples of this. The difference these historically accurate windows make is breathtaking. Actually, removing historic multi-light windows in favor of the most bland 1/1 windows would be a move in the wrong direction. Because the original sash were pivoting, the proposed change to a fixed sash over a tilt-and-turn sash is, we feel, appropriate in this case. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Kaylee Johnson. I promote you to panelist. Please unmute yourself and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello, Commissioners. Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District's Council. HJC finds the majority of this master plan to be appropriate. We find it commendable that the applicant is returning the historic arched window back to this building. However, we would like to see a 3/3 or 3/1 window configuration. Either approach would help this building conform more to its original appearance by recalling the 3/3 hopper windows. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Noting no additional raised hands, I'll note that Brooklyn CB2 waived review due to recess.
Okay. Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard, particularly about the 3/3 configuration?
Well, yes. And in the original designation report, at the time of designation, the windows were already changed to 1/1. I don't know why they didn't make the modification to 3/3 at that time, but that's what was done at the time of designation. And many other buildings in the district have also been converted to 1/1.
Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, we're going to move to our discussion now. Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So move?
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed. So this is a building that, it's a very large building in Dumbo that has had all of its historic windows replaced at the time of designation, and they're proposing a master plan for 1/1 double-hung-- sorry, for a configuration that is similar with 1 pane over 1 pane, but with a fixed and a tilt-and-turn sash. Going forward, they have improved, I think, some of the details over the existing condition. And in fact, the operation is a little more evocative of the historic operation, which had a fixed and pivot window. But, so the application is before us because it is for the configuration and, which is the 1 pane over the 1 pane and the change in operation. But I would note that there are no historic windows on the building now, and many of the other similar buildings nearby also had their historic windows replaced prior to designation. And so that's something that one can consider as we evaluate this application. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you start this one?
Yes, I find this appropriate. I'd also just note, it seemed to be consistent this morning, these windows will be more energy-efficient, which is also a good thing. So totally appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Do you find that appropriate?
Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. And I think they also noted the extra features, making them more soundproof and the ability to clean from the inside. So I think it's a good move.
Commissioner Chu?
I agree. I think this is appropriate.
Commissioner Akumbe?
I as well. I believe it's appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Wilder?
It's appropriate.
Vice Chair Bland?
I think it's appropriate, but I also want to say that, contrary to the testimony, even though such a large portion of the facades here are windows, to me somehow, and I know this building intimately, living nearby, my appreciation of this building does not rely on whether this is 3/1 or 3/3 or 1/1. But the overall mass of the building, the concrete detailing of the exterior, the clock tower and tower arrangement, so I don't think that the building rests on its window configuration alone. So I can find, because of what other Commissioners have just said about the efficiency, the cleaning mechanisms from the inside, et cetera, that this is an appropriate contemporary approach.
And Commissioner Chen?
Agree. I'm glad this is being done.
All right, great. And I would just follow up on Vice Chair's plan, Vice Chair Bland's comments. And when we look at applications for window replacement on buildings where all of the windows had been replaced prior to designation, and we're looking at being asked to approve a different configuration, we often look at the building on a very sort of case-by-case basis. And if the building is sort of strong architecturally for other reasons, including its ornament or its materiality, and the windows are not as critical to its style, the commission has approved alternate configurations. And so I think that this is consistent with that. And these concrete structures actually are really significant for their concrete structure that allowed for larger openings, whereas buildings to the north in Dumbo were really wood-framed buildings with brick facades. So it's really their monumentality and concrete, I think, that makes them very significant. And the window configuration, for me, doesn't change that. So I think we're all in agreement. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make the motion?
Yep.
With regards to LPC 25-07440, One Main Street, Dumbo Historic District, an industrial neoclassical-style factory building designed by William Higginson and built in 1914, the application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details were among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Dumbo Historic District. I further note that this industrial building was converted to residential use prior to designation with new window openings added at the east and secondary facade, and with all historic multi-light pivot and fixed sash windows replaced by 1/1 double-hung windows, some including fixed transoms, and that the conversion with similar work was completed at other buildings of a similar age and style, also built by the Gare Company and in the Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the 1/1 configuration dark finish of the proposed windows will maintain the building's wide fenestration pattern established during the major residential conversion and adaptive reuse of the building completed prior to designation, that the-- designation, that the proposed windows will be seen in conjunction with other similar buildings in the streetscape that also have uniform one-over-one windows, that the equal-sized tripartite window configuration at two of the central bays along Main Street facade will match the predominant configuration of the remainder of the facade, and this variation from the historic fenestration will not detract from the historic character of the building, that the change in openings from the existing double-hung windows to the fixed and upper, fixed upper sash with tilt-turned lower sash will better recall the pivot operations of the historic windows and will improve the energy efficiency and sound attenuation as required for residential uses in this zoning district, that the new window framing and top sash will follow the masonry arches of the existing openings, better matching the historic details than the existing windows, that the establishment of a master plan will support the uniformity of fenestration over time, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the buildings or the Dumbo Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Quembay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number four, LPC 25-12058, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 944, Lot 21, 30 Sterling Place in the Park Slope Historic District Extension 2. This is an Italianate-style row house built in 1874, and the application is to construct a rear yard addition with an elevated rear deck.
Hello? Okay, the mic is off. Hello, my name is Jijing. I'm from Tang Studio. I'm here for 30 Sterling Place in Brooklyn, Park Slope Historic District. For this project, we are seeking for a one-story rear yard addition at basement level. So here's, there are two maps. The maps on the left is showing the boundaries of the Historic District, and then the blue boundary is showing the original Park Slope Historic District, and the red is showing the extension. And then the diagram on the right is showing where 30 Sterling Place falls in the, the extension boundary, and it's also showing that the entire block, there's only half of the block are within the boundary, Historic Boundary, and the other half are none. So since we are seeking for the rear yard addition, so this is the bird-eye view showing the current rear yard of the part that is within the Historic District, and then we also colored out the current addition, so of the, of the rear yard. The, so there are two full-height additions that are showing in purple, and there are few, several, I think there are two two-story addition, and then a handful of one-story addition, and then we, the orange, the orange hatch is showing it's 30 Sterling Place is our project. We are seeking for one-story addition. So this is the, is the side, side map, showing the same information with the dimensions of the current rear yard addition. And let me continue. So this is a zooming view showing, it's a, it's a real picture, a zooming picture of the current rear yard at our portion. The 30 Sterling Place is all the way on the left, and we are emphasizing the number 40 and 50, those two full-height additions here, just for reference. And then you can also see there are handful of one-story additions within this block. So this is the front, front facade. The, it's just showing the, the destination photos and then the current photos of the front facade, although we are not proposing any scope for the front facade for this, for this application. So here is the current photo of the current rear facade, the one in the middle with the orange brick, and then existing one small vinyl white addition is our project, and then the one is 30, 30 Sterling Place, and then number 28, the one on the left, has, currently has two open decking, and the one on the right, number 32, has current, currently has one vinyl rear addition with a deck above. And then you can see further to the right, there the, the full-height addition that we're showing, one of the previous slide. That's the existing, that's the existing and proposed elevation, showing the, the red dash line is what we propose to demolish, and it's the, as, as you can see, the, we are showing, we are trying to, we are proposing to demolish the existing one, or enlarge the existing one addition, and then make it a full width. And on top of that, we propose a roof deck, and then with a metal stair goes down to the garden. And then on the second floor, we also want to propose a deck to, to give some outdoor space for the second floor. This is the section view, showing that actually the, the second floor deck is open to below. The actual addition is only, is only one-story at the basement. And here, this is the rendering, showing what we are trying to propose. And with the, we also model out the, the two adjacent, two adjacent buildings and showing their current elements. So here is the view analysis, and we, we walked the entire block, and then we, and the current, the 30 Sterling Place rear yard is totally invisible from any public thoroughfare. And this is a color palette that we are trying to achieve, and we would like to rematch the current facade brick, the yellow, the golden sunset modular brick, and then the, the stairs are, we are trying to, we are proposing the metal stairs, black metal stairs, and also the photos in the middle showing that we are also trying to propose a six-feet-high fence all around the, the property's rear yard. So this is just the plan showing what we are demolished and then compared to what we And this is the plan of the first floor and second floor, showing the existing plan versus the proposed plan. The rear, the rear addition is 13 feet 8 inches. And then we're also showing the, the two adjacent buildings' current addition, current rear, rear, rear facade elements for reference. So this is 14 Sterling Place that we are showing you here. It's a recently-approved two-story additions on the same block. It's on the left, a little bit on the left side of the block. This is, they are proposing a two-story addition, this similar scope if anything more, and I believe they are also, they are also proposed a roof, rooftop addition, which is visible. And then, and 14 Sterling Place is partially, rear facade is partially visible from the other side of the street. We're showing you here for reference. And this is the final image, just showing that it's rendering, it's the same rendering that we showed before, of the, the entire scope of the project.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions on this one, Commissioners? Okay. We're going to move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson, our Director of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, to take us through any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Right, seeing none, I will note for the record. Just pulling up our testimony record.
That looks like Brooklyn Community Board Six recommended approval. Okay, Commissioners, any final questions on this one? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Quembay, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we're looking at this proposal for, which is really a one-story addition with a second-story balcony and on posts, and so I think we can look at it as it is. We can also think of it visually as a, in the way we would look at a two-story rear yard addition within this context and this block, this half of the block that's in the Historic District does have other two-story and three-story and four-story additions. Commissioner Master, would you start this one?
Yes, I, I think this is a rather modest proposal for a one-story addition and a deck. I think that they've noted that the, it's not visible from a public thoroughfare, and that there are other one-story rear yard additions, as up to four-story rear yard additions. In addition, I think that the material, the metal and the brick is appropriate, and I would also note that the adjoining buildings also have a rear deck. So I, I can find this appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I think that in terms of what's being proposed, the mass is definitely more minimal than other additions to historic rear houses. I honestly just feel that the balcony looks odd, but I think the mass is, is something we would approve. I almost wish it was a two-story addition with a rooftop terrace than, than this massive cantilevered balcony, which I think is over scaled. But in terms of its mass, it is definitely something that we've approved, so yes, appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Quembay?
I agree. It's, I would approve it based on its, its mass and also what's relative around it, which has also most likely been approved as well. So it does seem to be appropriate.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
I think, I think, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Chu's comment about the cantilevered or second-floor addition.
Right. Commissioner, Vice Chair Bland?
Yeah, the only thing that's, that's different here from hundreds of these that we've approved is the, the full balcony on the second floor. It's not cantilevered, it's actually posted there, but I don't think it's inappropriate if that's what they really want. This balcony will make the balcony below it, of course, a little more weatherproof, but also all the time darker inside, but that's their choice. So I wouldn't vote against it because of that. I just think it's a little bit odd, but I think it's, it's okay. You know, I'd vote for it.
Commissioner Chen?
I agree with the Vice Chair.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I, I agree with the Vice Chair and Commissioner Chu. I would just add that the staff should verify the brick looks like it's trying to match the existing brick, and that should be verified if either it matches or is, fits in well, or if they just need to play with that a bit, but in general, appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
When I thought last night, I thought, gee, it looks surreal. It's appropriate.
Okay. All right, so I think we do have a consensus to approve it as is, and we, of course, will ask them to provide samples of the brick for staff review and approval. Commissioner Master, would you make the motion?
In the matter of LPC-25-12058, 30 Sterling Place in the Park Slope Historic District Extension 2, an Italianate-style row house built in 1874, application is to construct a rear yard addition with an elevated rear deck. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of this Park Slope Extension 2 Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed work will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that the proposed rear yard addition and deck will not rise to the full height of the building, thereby retaining a sense of the building's original scale and massing, that the one-story addition will be in keeping with existing additions in the block in terms of height and projection into the central green space, that the presence of a one-story addition and elevated rear deck within this portion of the block, which includes a two-story deck at an adjoining building, will not detract from the row, that the brick-clad addition and metal deck will be simple in design and typical in terms of materials and finishes, and that the proposed work will not detract from the significant architectural or historic character of the building or the Park Slope Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Quembay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, that's approved, and we'll move to the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number five, LPC 25-11028, an application for a binding report in the Borough of Brooklyn. This is the Eastern Parkway Scenic Landmark, a parkway designed by Frederick Law Olmstead and Calvert-Boxen built in 1870 to 74. The application is to install signs and paving.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nick Petnotti. I am Deputy Director of Urban Design for the New York City Department of Transportation, and I serve as liaison to the Landmarks Preservation Commission for the department. We're here today to talk about a, hopefully relatively simple project, but looking at ADA upgrades along Eastern Parkway, specifically at one bus stop at Buffalo Avenue. I'm going to move through this pretty quickly. Obviously, if there are questions, feel free to stop me along the way. There we go. Whoops, sorry. You know, I thought the lag wouldn't be here with the new digs. Same thing as before. Sorry. So a quick summary, again, we are looking at making improvements within the Eastern Parkway Scenic Landmark. There are a number of relatively minor ADA upgrades that we're working with staff on. Today, we're going to focus on, in particular, the upgrades at Buffalo Ave related to the bus stop there. We are relocating bus stops from the service road to the main line, and in order to make that an ADA-compliant bus stop, we need to introduce pavement there where there is not. So we'll get through that again relatively quickly. A bit of history about transportation along Eastern Parkway. Obviously, the, the parkway itself was designed by Frederick Law Olmstead and Calvert-Boxen in 1866. Bus service did begin on the parkway in 1925. It was designated a scenic landmark by this body in 1978. Jurisdictionally, Parks maintains the malls themselves, the green spaces, and then DOT is responsible for the roadway, and obviously MTA is responsible for the bus service. So we work across multiple agencies. There have been a number of projects over the years along Eastern Parkway as well. In terms of the character, if you're not familiar with it, the, the parkway is characterized by these very iconic middle malls that are, are generally speaking, made up of two grass verges on either side and a shared use path in the middle that supports pedestrian and cyclist traffic. There is a mix of materials that you see on the malls, granite block, asphalt hex pavers, granite curb, grass and trees. There are also some areas where you have subway vents and infrastructure that was introduced in, between 1915 and 1918 is when the subway was built. It runs along the entire main line, and again, just did disrupt the original construction of the mall, and you can see here in some of the pictures, especially the one on the right, there are these vent infrastructure that's necessary to support the subway below. So that does disrupt the continuity of those grass verges along the way. So that does disrupt the continuity of those grass verges along the way. In terms of what we're looking at today, this is really resulting from our collaboration with the MTA in rerouting the existing B-14 bus. Currently, it starts at Utica and then makes a right turn at Rochester Avenue and proceeds up the Service Road. Really, what we see in reality is the bus operators actually just stay on the Main Line. They don't make that right-hand turn. They pick people up from the median. And quite frankly, it is more efficient for the bus to be routed this way. So this is now going to be moving the bus stops from the Service Road, where they are currently, to the median malls at Utica and at Buffalo. We're going to zoom in specifically to Buffalo now. So the existing character here is the sort of typical grass verge with the asphalt hex paper path in the middle. In order to make the bus stop accessible, we need to install pavement where there is currently a grass strip. We've worked with the Parks Department to relocate, transplant an existing small tree that they recently planted there. So that will be going nearby. I think we just found the location for that, which is great. And then we'll be installing ADA-compliant granite pavers in the stretch that's outlined in blue here. So it's a fairly small area. It's about eight feet wide by 45 feet long, 360 square feet or so. This is just to give you a sense of what that looks like now. So again, the existing grass will be replaced with granite paver. We thought the granite paver was a way to still preserve the sort of aesthetic of the verges because the existing pavement adjacent to it is asphalt hex paver. The important thing for us is that it is ADA-compliant, right? It's a smooth granite paver to allow for the accessible boarding and lighting of bus passengers. You can see in the picture on the, sort of the right-hand side, this is an example of what this looks like. This was done around Central Park in a very similar fashion where they needed to upgrade their bus stops along Fifth Avenue. So it'll be a bus stop pole like you see, and then this smooth granite pavers in the grass strip there. And that's it. Happy to talk through any questions that you have and answer here.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
The side road usually has parking on both sides of the street that's usually packed with cars. So this side of having the bus stop and it being accessible is probably potentially even safer and more practical than where it was before, correct?
Yeah, I think we'll see a lot less interference with cars.
And there's actually a zone where the bus can pull off the main drive, too. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move to public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be John Graham. You will be promoted to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The Eastern Parkway Scenic Landmark is over two miles long and this proposal affects a very small part of it. But no work on the Parkway should be undertaken without careful consideration of its effects on the overall design as well as on the immediate vicinity. Granite block pavers come in an infinite variety of finishes. The smooth blocks proposed may be too smooth and potentially slippery when wet. Stone with thermal and other finishes has a more appropriate character and with proper jointing is accessible. We also believe that 80-foot-long segments without trees are inappropriate and unnecessary for accessibility. There are already long stretches of the Parkway without trees because of subway infrastructure. We shouldn't make this situation worse. There is room for both trees and access to bus doors. People with all levels of mobility would appreciate shade when waiting at a bus stop. Finally, we note that the application includes signs, but there's no information on signs in the presentation. We therefore can't comment on this. The Commission should be aware, however, that when the Parkway was reconstructed 30 years ago, the Commission approved a coordinated and comprehensive plan for pavements and street furnishings, including lampposts, bollards, traffic signals, benches, trees and signs. Any additions to or relocation of these elements should follow this plan and not substitute standard materials and designs. Finally, Commissioners, I'll just note that after the proposal for one Main Street, the audio quality deteriorated quite significantly. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. John, can you hear us now, though? Has it improved since then?
I can hear you now. It improved two or three minutes ago. But I've got my audio turned up quite high.
All right, thank you very much.
There are other members joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony. Please use the raise hand function. Okay, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Eight has waived review of this application. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments?
Yes, happy to. Does this have to be unmuted? No? We're good? Okay. Sorry, just to respond, I'll go in reverse order. In terms of the sign, the sign we are proposing is just the bus stop pole that you see in the photo there. There are numerous of these that exist along Eastern Parkway, along the Service Road where there are bus stops now. It's literally just taking that same pole and moving it to this bus stop. There's no other signage incorporated into the proposal. And then we certainly share the concern around the slip and trip conditions here. That's something that DOT takes very seriously. I want to assure the Commission that this will be an ADA-compliant paver that is safe and slip-resistant for passengers that will be using the bus. This is something that we do in historic districts throughout the city and something we have a lot of familiarity with.
Any final questions, Commissioners? All right, so we'll move to our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is an application for an advisory report. It is something that the Public Design Commission will review and so we are reviewing this in an advisory capacity today. And the proposal is to modify the median to reroute a bus and that includes replacing a portion of the grass with ADA-surfaced granite pavers and relocating the sign from the current bus stop to the new bus stop. Commissioner Chu, would you start this one?
Sure. It's a very clear and actually modest intervention, these two stops. I think this provides a simple, safe and accessible solution to a problem that exists along the Parkway. Yeah, I think that in the effect of it to the original landmark Olmstead and Box designed, I think is very minimal. I think this is very appropriate.
Commissioner Ekumbe.
I agree. It's a minimal intervention. And it seems that it's working more with the natural flow of the traffic in the area.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder.
I agree.
Vice Chair Bland.
Before I say I agree, which I do, I want to be reminded, or I'm, I'll just say personally reminded of the original vision that Olmstead had for this Parkway and Ocean Parkway, connecting the new Prospect Park then to the Atlantic Ocean via, so you could take your horse from your stable in the park, galloping down Ocean Parkway so that you could then gallop up and down the beach on the Atlantic Ocean. On the other way, on this Parkway, you could gallop your horse all the way over to Queens in Forest Park. And it's a remarkable green vision, a continuous green vision from Central Queens to the Atlantic Ocean. So the importance of this little strip of land is, to me, crucial. That's just a way of reminding everybody what this original vision was and how it's been, you know, somewhat changed over time. We've gotten rid of those horses, I guess. But I think what's being proposed here is a step forward for accessibility, which is important. And I don't think it compromises this important boulevard at all.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Chen.
Well said. I thank the Vice Chair for the reminder. I once had a mentor by the name of Edward Wincoman, who's an elderly attorney. And he, his story confirmed what the Vice Chair just said. As a kid, he used to gallop down Eastern Parkway. So talk about the coefficient of friction on a rainy day on a horseback. And so, yeah, but it is a grand vision. I mean, I wish we were alive back then just to see the trees that are fully laid, the Champs-Elysees, and galloping down and going all the way to the waterline, you know, the seashore.
All right, Commissioner Ginsburg.
I find appropriate and appreciate my fellow Commissioners' history.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Especially thoughts, too.
Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I find it appropriate and I just want to say how much I enjoy Commissioner Bland's historical style. It's just fantastic.
All right, so, and I will second that as well. And I think we have a consensus to approve a favorable report. Commissioner Chu, would you make the motion?
Yes, in the case of LPC-25-11028 Eastern Parkway, a Parkway designed by Frederick Law Olmstead and Calvert-Boxen, and built in 1870 to 74, the application is to install signs and paving. I recommend that a favorable report be issued, finding that the proposed work will support, sorry, let me, will support improvements to an existing bus route, thereby enhancing the public's experience of the Parkway, that the removal of one tree and the limited installation of granite pavers at the portion of the grass verge will be consistent with prior alterations to the Parkway and will not significantly reduce the overall amount of green space or trees at the Parkway, that the proposed granite pavers will be compatible with the materials and finish palette of the median, that the contrast between the proposed granite pavers and the verges and existing asphalt hex block pavers at the center of the median will help maintain the historically divided and symmetrical organization of the medians, that the proposed bus stop signage will be in keeping with signage found elsewhere along the Parkway in terms of material size and simplicity of design and details, and will have an inconspicuous presence at the median and within vistas of the Parkway, and that the cumulative effect of the work will not detract from the historic, formal and picturesque aspects of the scenic landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Ekumbe, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Ekumbe.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder.
Aye.
With nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
The next item is Public Hearing Item Number Six, LPC-25-04592, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 5181, Lot 64, 491 East Seventeenth Street in the Dittmas Park Historic District. This is a colonial revival-style freestanding house designed by Seth H. Cutting and built in 1920. The application is to modify the driveway. Good morning, Commissioners, Chair Carroll, Mr. Silverburn, wherever he is, and staff. My name is Michael Hiller. My wife and I own and reside at the property at 491 East Seventeenth Street in Dittmas Park. If I can do this here. And that's our home. This is our application for permission to remove this 30-inch-wide strip of dirt and grass that runs up the middle of our driveway to our home and replace it with untinted concrete such that it would resemble many of the other driveways in the neighborhood. Having reviewed the designation report myself, I know that Dittmas Park, which is the historic district in which we live, was designated because its unique assortment of homes and grassy areas that create a sort of bucolic community within the busiest city of the world. I searched through the designation report to determine whether the driveways of the neighborhood, and in particular, those with grass and dirt ribbon strips up the middle of the driveways were in some way regarded as part of the historic, cultural, architectural fabric of the district. And the truth is, they really aren't. In fact, the terms driveway, grass and ribbon do not appear even once in the designation report. I do recognize that the Victorian Society has opposed our application on the basis that the grass and dirt ribbon strips going up the middle of the driveways in the neighborhood comprise a critical component, at least this is what they say, a critical component of why the neighborhood was designated a historic district. And in particular, the Society commented, and I'm just quoting now, that the grass and dirt strips are, quote, "an important expression of desire by the original developers to make these neighborhoods as green and suburban as possible." And I would respectfully submit to all of you that if green strips going up the middle driveways were to have comprised an important element of this neighborhood, their existence probably would have been mentioned at least once in the designation report, and they weren't. But more importantly, it's a mistake, I think, to conclude that the grass ribbon strips in driveways are some way a hallmark of suburban environments. There are, in fact, grass ribbon strips in the driveways in Brooklyn Heights, Carroll Gardens, and even Bushwick, and dozens of other neighborhoods that would never be confused with a neighborhood that is, quote, "as green and suburban as possible." I actually grew up in the suburbs of Long Island. I grew in a place called Merrick, home of Amy Fisher, if you know who she was. I spent time in dozens of neighborhoods, suburban neighborhoods all over the Long Island, and I can say with absolute certainty that while there were occasional grass strips in driveways, they are certainly not the hallmark of suburban living. In fact, I don't remember a single driveway with a grass ribbon strip in my neighborhood, Merrick. So it wasn't the norm. If anything, the grass ribbon strips were unusual. To me, the defining elements, and I think is reflected in the report, the defining elements of Dittmas Park, much like suburban living, whether on the outskirts of New York City or on Long Island, are standalone homes separated by side yards, manicured lawns and backyards, detached garages, and the existence of driveways that lead to those garages, trees on the sidewalk abrams and gardens confronting people's homes. A narrow grass and dirt strip going up the center of the driveway isn't a defining element of suburbia any more than a screen door conveys that sentiment. It's something that some suburban's homes have and others don't, which leads me to my next point. I'm going to try to do this the right way here. So if you look at, whoops, I actually went to every house in the neighborhood, took pictures of the ones on my block. And as you can see, there are some with and some without. For example, the one on the left, that's 497, that's my next-door neighbor. He has no ribbon strip. But then if you go to the next one, this one also has no ribbon strip. That's Judge Schneider's house on the right. But you can see there are some that do have them. And it really, there's really no rhyme or reason to it. It's not like you have four in a row that have and then four in a row that don't. It's just that some did and some don't. And anyway, so it's, like I said, it's not that they're, you know, constant and everywhere. There are some of them that have and some that don't. The Victorian Society suggested that the proportion of driveways with ribbon strips and those without them should be preserved, even though some have been eliminated over the years. But to me, that argument implies that the removal of the grass ribbon strips has happened since designation or since, you know, since the community was created. But I'm going to turn now to some of the 1940s. These are just more pictures of current Dittmas Park. But if you look, and that's my house, by the way, and we're going to get back to that middle section in just a second. But let's now just turn to, also my house. This is the neighborhood confines, just to give you some perspective of the size of it. And now, these are the 1940s tax photographs. And you can see there's a grass ribbon strip going up. This is my driveway back in 1940. But now, these photographs, by the way, were, whoops, I'm sorry. But now, these photographs, by the way, were -- whoops, I'm sorry. Can I go back? This is a, you can see, there's a side-by-side comparison of 1940 on the left versus current day on the right. And these photos were taken by Mohammed Qadaru, who's a part of the municipal building society, I think. He actually did all this for me. And you can see in the middle section, the dots, I believe, reflect those with full concrete driveways. You can see that in 1940, there were, again, an assortment of different homes that had ribbon strips going up the middle and those which don't. So it's not the case that all of a sudden we've lost these gorgeous ribbon strips. And which leads me to sort of my next point. And I want to go back to the photograph where I said I wanted you to look at the middle of the photograph for my house, because -- whoop, I just passed it. And this is sort of an indication of kind of the way they all look today. If you look in the middle section, you see that sort of long brown patch. So when these ribbon strips were created, they were created at a time in the late 19th century, early 20th century, and most of the homes were built around that time. And these ribbon strips typically were underneath like a carriage or a vehicle, typically a smaller vehicle, because back then, as you know, the vehicles were much smaller. And people used those vehicles in their daily lives. And so as a consequence, during daytime, those strips would be covered with sunlight, and they would receive rainwater. Today, most of us in Ditmas Park, we leave our cars in the driveway all day. We use public transportation because that's a good thing for all of us to do. So as a consequence, instead of having these really bucolic grass ribbon strips, we have this assortment of dirt and torn-up grass. And for those of us who are really concerned about trying to keep them as nice as possible, we have to be very careful as we drive into the driveway, God forbid, we run onto the grass, it kind of wrecks them even worse. And so they really don't play a role in sort of this pastoral urban landscape. They are kind of an eyesore. In many respects, I guess what I'm saying is not only do they not add to the neighborhood, they actually detract from it. And in closing, I do want to mention the sort of elephant in the room. As most of you know, I am a preservation attorney, and usually I'm over there pounding away at developers who are trying to interfere with our gorgeous preservation, our gorgeous historic districts and designated landmarks. For me, my work has never been a passing fancy. This is what I do because I believe in it. I have always lived in historic districts, and I've always wanted to live in historic districts. I see historic districts as an opportunity for me to experience the past in a way that allows me to be inspired by the present. And for me, I would never want to take away from a historic district. And at one point, when I heard there was a public hearing, I actually thought about withdrawing my application because the last thing I want to do is be someone who detracts from historic districts. But when I looked at the 1940s tax photos and I looked at the designation report, I realized that these grass ribbon strips are not really a contributing factor to the neighborhood. So with that, I will just simply say that I ask that you grant my application. And I'm going to leave the picture, just so you guys aren't looking at a blank screen. I'll leave it on that, and I'll be glad to take any questions after public comment. And thank you very much.
Thank you. We may have some questions now. Commissioner Chu.
Yeah. So interesting to understand a bit of the history of these grass zones. But yeah, I think the '20s is probably around when they were really popular, and a lot of these houses are probably done around then. My thought is, there's two things. One is definitely you'd be increasing more impervious surface. Did you think of putting some kind of a paver or something that might be impervious in place of it? Because, yes, most of the time, those strips are dead grass and weeds, which is not attractive. But at the same time, more concrete is not that attractive either. So I'm just wondering if there's a different approach.
I mean, to be honest with you, I kind of like the idea of pavers. The reason I didn't consider it is that there's only one other property that I found that did have the pavers, and I felt that doing that might actually offend the Commission. But if that's something the Commission wants me to explore, I think it'd be kind of cool-looking, to be honest with you. But I don't, if I'm in keeping with preservation, I would say it's probably not consistent with the neighborhood, at least historically, because as I know, there's only one. I'm not convinced there was permission for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We'll take public testimony, and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be John Graham.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society of New York. This may seem like a small change, but these grass ribbons in driveways are an important expression of the desire by the original developers to make these neighborhoods as green and suburban as possible. We fail to see why the fact that some have disappeared means it's appropriate to remove more of them. Just the opposite. The grass ribbon should stay. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else join us via Zoom who wishes to speak? Please use the raise hand function. And seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board 14 waived review of this application under the advice of the Ditmas Park Association.
All right. Thank you. I think you sort of addressed their comments in advance, sort of proactively. But if there's anything else you'd like to say before we move to our discussion, feel free.
No, I didn't. And thank you very much. If anyone has questions, I'm right over here.
Okay, thanks. Any final questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
If you replaced it with concrete, you won't be able to match. You'll have to take the whole thing out and put a whole new concrete sidecar.
That's right. I would have to replace the driveway. If you look, I don't, I'll see if I can get back to it, but what you'll see is the driveway is kind of all cracked. You can see there's some cracking at the end of the driveway. And I'm trying to see if I can get a better shot of it. It's hard to see, but trust me when I tell you, there are cracks throughout. The reason we actually were doing this wasn't to eliminate the grass strip. It was actually to repair the driveway because it is in such bad shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final questions? Okay, so we'll move to our discussion. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. So we're looking at this proposal to replace the driveway, which would involve removing the grass strip, which, as we've noted, was a common feature, and that is why the staff can't approve it. But the applicant has presented to us today that, today, there are many driveways without a grass strip on this particular block. And even in the 1940s tax photo, there had been many that didn't have the grass strip. So given that context, we can think about the application that way. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you start this one?
I, in general, think this is appropriate. I think Commissioner Chu's suggestion of a permeable paver where the grass strip is would be a good one, is to delineate the difference and also allow for more water infiltration into the ground. So I'd suggest working with staff if you're amenable to that, that you do that. Although you may need to replace the concrete, it would also solve that issue that Commissioner Jefferson raised.
Commissioner Jefferson.
I agree with your comment. I agree with the Commissioner's comments. Either the pavers or replace the sidewalk, either one.
Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Ginsburg. I think that was a good suggestion.
Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, I think that either a full replacement, as proposed, or doing something, or working with staff to do something a little more reminiscent of the strip would be appropriate.
All right. Commissioner Quembe.
Men in agreement with the other Commissioners.
All right. Commissioner Wilder.
I agree with both options, with the pavers or the concrete.
Vice Chair Bland.
In agreement.
And Commissioner Chen.
Seeing here.
Okay. All right. So I think where we are is we actually would support the application as proposed, but would also support your exploring a permeable paver in the center there that would recall that strip. So Commissioner Ginsburg, would you be able to make your way through that? Okay.
With regards to LPC-25-04592, 491 East Seventeenth Street, Ditmas Park Historic District, excuse me. A colonial revival-style freestanding house designed by Seth H. Cutting and built in 1920. Application is to modify the driveway. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Ditmas Park Historic District. I recommend approval finding that the historic district and this block in particular feature a mix of concrete driveways with both grass and median strips and full with concrete paving. Therefore, the work will be in keeping with the current and historic variety of the driveway configuration, that the proposed standard untinted concrete paving will match the adjacent paving, that the property will retain an abundance of lawn and planting areas apart from the removal of the grass strip driveway, and the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the streetscape. However, I would suggest that the applicant consider the use of permeable pavers at the median to recall the median strip, and that can be done working with staff.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Quembe.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right. That's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is Public Hearing Item Number Seven, LPC 25-05796, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 5092, Lot 22, 1123 Albemarle Road, the Prospect Park South Historic District. This is a house designed by Carol H. Pratt and built in 1902 and later altered by the mid-20th century. The application is to alter the facade and construct a porch.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicant has entered the hearing via Zoom. Brian, you now have control of the presentation. If you could just click on your screen. Brian, are you with us? Can you unmute yourself? Okay, I will. Looks like you are unmuted. We cannot hear you if you are talking. Maybe turn up your volume? And try again. You're very low.
All right. Can you hear this?
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Brian, can you click on your screen? Then you can advance your slides.
Okay. Where do I click on this?
You just click on the screen in front of you. You can just, just right where it says 1123 Albemarle Road. You just click right on that. Perfect. Now you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Yes. Hello. My name is Brian Finley. I'm with Murdochs Alone Architects. And I am here representing my client, who owns 1123 Albemarle Road. This is in Prospect Park South Historic District. And I will just flip through. This is, the property is a house that is at the corner of Albemarle and Westminster in the Prospect Park South District. It kind of defies architectural definition. I'm still kind of wrapping my head around what style it technically is. It's sort of kind of Shaker, it's kind of Queen Anne. You know, one thing that we do know is that it's been modified pretty heavily throughout the years, even before it was designated. Because you can see, even in the old tax photos and the historic photos that we have, there was originally some porches on the front. We know that were removed and were replaced with some, you know, I don't know, some sort of euphemistically creative brick extension solutions out on the front. And in the back as well, we think that there was, you know, originally a back porch that was enclosed and some other little pieces cobbled onto the back of it. And you can see here, it's also been painted this kind of lurid shade of green, which we know from the neighbors, is something that happens, you know, fairly recently. Somehow, the previous owner got in and painted it green with red trim. And you can see, this is a small photo, but you can see kind of down in the back, because this is on Westminster and, you know, and three sides of it are visible from public thoroughfare. You know, you can see all the kind of messy window components and things that have been sort of attached on throughout the years. One of the reasons, one of the reasons that we think this was not original is just from reviewing the Sanborn maps, which is really the only documentation we have of this property before designation. You know, you can see going back to, you know, 1906 and 1918, this property was, it was drawn differently. And, you know, you can see some dash lines, both on the front and the back, which disappeared and became solid by 1929. So this is, you know, yet a little more reinforcement that we think this was originally a porch on the back of this house. There are, you know, and just to be clear, you know, the application for this is, you know, painting the house a more appropriate color. But it's also, you know, the removal of this back extension and the creation of what we hope will be a, you know, historically appropriate porch for this house. And here are some other examples from around the neighborhood. It's kind of a unique property because we're on the corner. But, you know, there are, you know, several houses that have, you know, side porches that are, you know, that are either, have been enclosed or still unenclosed next to their driveways on the side of the house. And this is kind of a plan of the existing condition, you know, where they have kind of, where someone has come through and put this kitchen in. There's an exploration on the left, and you can see, you know, on the interior walls, some of the, what we think is some of the original shingles that have since been covered up by interior finishes. And, you know, here's some better, you know, views of the sort of lousy exterior. You know, some of these, like this is what we think where the footprint was of the original porch. And then there are some, you know, additional kind of pieces that have even been cobbled on after that. So, you know, what we're proposing is to, you know, remove some of these additions and kind of streamline it back into the, to what we hope is a, you know, historically accurate, you know, form of a porch. This is, you know, removing a lot of that and what the final elevation would look like on the north. And again, as well for the section. This also includes, because of the programming on the inside, we want to move the kitchen further into the property. And that would mean changing some of the existing window, window and doors within the porch. There will be kind of a bigger, separate, you know, window replacement project that, you know, is not, that I'm not arguing for right now. I'm really just focused on the window openings within this porch. So on the left is what we, is what we were identified by framing as possibly being some of the original opening shapes. And on the right is, you know, what we would want programmatically by the current use of the house. And this is, this is an elevation here section through that. And then the door itself, we would, you know, use a historically appropriate wood door with a side light. And in terms of the color of the house, there are places where we, you know, some of this, you know, kind of aquamarine color have been flaking off. And, you know, we're seeing what we think was an original color of the house. know, we're seeing what we, what we think was an original color of the house. So, the, the intention would be to go back to this, kind of, you know, woody gray color and, and the platinum, and the platinum gray, and you can see this, this is on the left, this is another house on Westminster that has a color and a very similar tone that, that we find very appealing. And this is rendering, rendering of the house with the, with a new porch on it. There is, I've been communicating a lot with Caroline about this fence, there, there is an existing wood fence on this property that is, is constructed, I, I, I know that it was installed without a landmarks permit, it is compliant with zoning, it's six feet and it's, you know, on the, on the side of the property, which is allowed on corner lots. And the intention would eventually be to, as, as the next phase, the client's not super attached to this fence, but we would probably remove it and, and get another fence and go through the, the proper channels at landmarks. So, it does, you can see that, you know, when you're, when you're going down Westminster, you know, the, the fence and the way that it's situated does, you know, we, we kind of attempted to show this and, you know, transparency, so you could, you could get a read on how the fence affects the, the, the visibility of the porch itself, and it does, and it does a little. You know, it is, it is somewhat hidden behind the fence, but I'm not sure of how relevant that is ultimately, because we would want something that would be appropriate whether the fence is there or not, so.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any questions? All right, we're going to move to public testimony. Oh, yes, Commissioner Chu.
The application, the house is being re-painted, you're replacing the existing shingles as well, is that correct, or just portion where you're making it exterior?
No, we would want to strip the paint off of the existing shingles and then, and, and patch and replace them where they're rotten, but, you know, we, we would want to retain as many of the original shingles as we can and just paint.
Okay, and then the, the renderings that you show of the facade that proposed with the new paint and window surrounds of, the existing windows are just to be refinished, is that correct?
Correct.
They're not being replaced?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and just, just to be clear, the painting of the house is eligible for a staff level permit, and, and then that fence that was described, I believe, is not part of this application, and they're going to be working on a proposal for that, that may be staff level or maybe a commission level depending on what the proposal is, but that's a future application. Yes, Commissioner Wilder?
A quick question, with the relocation of the kitchen, is there any plan for mechanical exhaust going through the roof or walls or anything like that?
No, no, there's not.
Okay, any other questions? Right now, we're going to move to public testimony and then we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room to speak on this item? Okay, noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson. I'll be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District's Council. HTC finds this proposal to be appropriate and commendable. The porch addition is beautifully designed and increases the aesthetic appeal of the north and east elevations. Additionally, we find the material choices for the facade to be modest and appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to offer testimony, please use the raise Seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board 14 waives review of this application per the advice of the Prospect Park South Association.
Okay, all right, so I think the testimony was supportive, Mr. Finley, is there anything else you would like to say before we move to our discussion?
No, there's not.
Okay, and Commissioners, any final questions on this one? All right, so I think we'll move to our discussion then. Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so this is an application to replace an existing addition with an open porch, and then to modify the openings within the wall that would now be exposed because of the open porch, and the applicant has shown that historically maps indicate that there was a porch in this location on this building. Commissioner Jefferson, would you take this one?
I find it appropriate, a well-done insertion of a porch into an existing architectural composition, just really well done.
Commissioner Master?
I agree, I think it's appropriate, especially given that there probably was a porch here, it's a really big improvement to this house.
Commissioner Chu?
Yes, very appropriate, nicely done at bringing the porch back if that was original, it looks like it makes sense. What's there now looks like barnacles on, on, on an existing structure, but everything they've done to refinish, I think, just makes it a classic, great, beautiful house. The color scheme that's existing is just all over the place as well.
Yeah, it's great. Commissioner Ekwembe?
I agree, it's simplistic and elegant.
Commissioner Wilder?
I agree, also good job on the rendering.
Vice Chair Bland?
Agreed. Also, I just want to say that those of you who might not know this historic district, go and visit it, it's an extraordinary place with the most unusual houses in all of New York, I think.
Commissioner Chen?
You really want to keep us in?
Yeah, I agree.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree, and just to note, this is unusual in a reduction of the interior space, but it makes it a much better building.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Jefferson, would you make the motion?
In the matter of LPC-25-05796, application is to alter the facade and construct a porch. I know that the building's style, scale, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historical character of the Prospect Park South Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage it or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the house has been modified throughout its history. The alteration to the facade may some reopenings and additions, and therefore the proposed work will be in keeping with the history of change. But the historic documentation reveals that a porch previously existed at this location, that the proposed porch and steps feature white painted wood post trim and railings, a brick base, a slope roof with architectural asphalt shingles, and gray painted wood shingles siding will be consistent with the design, material, and finish of the house, as well as historical, historic porches found on other houses in this historic district. That the proposed opening at the secondary, secondary north and east facade under the porch features a paired wood six over, six over one double hung windows and a multi-light wood door and side light, all painted white, will harmonize with the existing fenestration of the house. The proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historical character of the building or the Prospect Park South Historic District.
Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Ekwembe?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
None in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
Next item is public hearing item number eight, LPC 25-07942, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 84, lot 7501, 140 West Street, the Barclay VZ Building, individual and interior landmark. This is an American Art Deco style skyscraper designed by Ralph Walker and built in 1923 to 27, and the application is to modify window assemblies and install balconies.
Morning Commissioners, my name is Lester Katz with DXA Studio, I'm here to present 140 West Street, the Barclay VZ Building, an individual landmark in Manhattan, to replace some, to replace some windows on the upper floors. This is the Barclay VZ Building, which was built in the 20s, Ralph Walker was the architect, it was designated individual landmark in 1989. The application here is to modify the current configuration of the monumental windows at the 34th, 31st floor penthouse on the facade at both VZ and West Street. The area in question, this is the existing condition, showing these monumental windows in the center bay, the center of the center bay, we are looking to replace some windows with Juliet balconies with doors on it. This was, and this was the elevation from the certificate of appropriateness in 19, sorry, in 2014. Here's a picture of the facade at the 31st floor on, this is the VZ Street elevation, these are the doors at the 30th floor pen, terrace, penthouse, and then up above is the area which we want to change out windows for doors. And they, and here's the same condition on the West Street side, again, showing the doors of the 30th floor and then the windows up above. This is the elevation in context, it's approximately 450 feet above the ground plane, again, showing the existing and proposed, we'll show the detail in a second. This is the West Street side, again, showing the location in its, where it is in the building, in its context. We're getting into more detail, this is on the VZ Street side, where we will take the hopper windows out and put in new hopper windows at the 30, at the 31st floor mezzanine, those will be approved at staff level. These doors that are on the 31st floor are to be put in along with Juliet balcony, glass railings in the front, all of the frames with glass and materials will all match the And the same thing on the West Street side, which will have, again, putting in doors here, hopper windows up above, and then this area over here, which currently does not have spandrel glazing, we will put in spandrel glazing. Here's a detail showing again the existing condition over here with the windows at the 31st floor on the VZ Street side, we are proposing to put these, a set of doors approximately four inches back, and a Juliet balcony in, in front of it, a glass railing. These, the doors will be approximately three and a half feet by seven foot seven high, again, matching the doors down below. And the same condition, again, on West Street, the guardrail would be 42 inches high as per code. These are details showing the existing window profiles, the mullions, these which will be removed, taken out. And these are details of the doors that exist down below, and we'll be copying the same profiles and the same materials, same hardware up above. Here's a sample of the glass and the, and the window frame that we have from previous research, and all matching what's there now. Here's a rendering showing the proposal, the doors over here at the 30th floor, the doors, the new doors up here at the 31st floor with the glass railings in front of Another shot of the proposal from straight on, a little detail. And then this is a shot, renderings from the street, a little hard to see, but, because they're so high, but essentially, not much change from street level in terms of what, what you'd be able to see. This is a zoomed close-up of the condition, again, the existing on the left showing the current condition, and then the window, the door, doors replacing the windows with the spandrel condition on the, on the right, this is the VZ Street side. And then this is the same condition on the West Street side, showing again the hopper windows that are here now being, they will be put up here, and then the doors replacing it in the middle. That's the presentation, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Chu, followed by Commissioner Jefferson?
The spandrel conditions above and below the, the operable doors where you have the balcony, are those backpainted? What, what's the treatment of the?
Yes, those, some of those, whatever already exists will be just copied.
You're copying that, it's not, it's not a shadow box, it's just a backpainted?
Correct.
Piece of glass?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Is the building going through a change of use?
No, there's no change of use here, it's just same, same, same use.
But the building has, in, in, as part of the prior approval, was converted to residential use?
Yes.
So, it is a, historically an office building that has been converted to residential use. All right, any other questions? And I'll note that there's no one here in the hearing room to testify on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand None, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board 1 recommends denial.
Okay, all right, so the community, the only testimony we have is a resolution from the community board, which recommended denial, you're welcome to speak to that, or what happened at the community board, or address it if you wish.
Sure, I think the community board just liked things status quo, and they weren't interested in changing anything, but I think, we think that's an appropriate solution to what the client wants, so, and it's in keeping with the historic nature of the building, not changing anything significantly and copying what's there now, so.
Okay, all right, yes, final questions, Commissioner Chu?
The, the styles rails of those operable doors, can you give me, maybe it's on your detail, but what's, what's the width on those? And how much larger is that than the, than the mullion that they're replacing?
Right now, the window mullions are two inches?
Yeah.
On sheet 13. And the door styles will be two inches plus the, or that's, I guess the, it looks to be about four inches from my estimation here. Oh, it's on, oh, five, it's on the, the existing profile on the left side, it says five inches on page 14. We'd be keeping that same profile.
You're keeping that profile from below to above?
Yes.
Did you explore narrower sightline window styles?
Again, we were just keeping in consistent, consistency with what was already approved, not having to replace the ones below with new ones, so we're just copying what's there.
And just so I'm understanding, that there's never doors up here, you're saying the ones below, not the ones in the, in the proposed place?
Right, the ones below were approved previously, we're just?
Okay.
Copying it above on the next level.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? We'll move to our discussion, Commissioner Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is an application to modify the window assemblies at the very top floor of this building to accommodate doors and glass railings, and I think this is as a result of the building's conversion to residential use, it's just in, it's consistent with that use change. Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start this one?
Of course. I think the fact that it's, what, how many stories up, 30 stories or something, does not mean that you don't get the details right. Certainly you can't see it as well as if it were second or third floor, but I think the details are right. This is an adaptive reuse of a very important building, from, which has already been accomplished, of course, from office to residential, so I think these residentially scaled and operational windows are appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I agree with how significant this building is and given the height, but the details is being, you know, I can find it appropriate because it's, you know, it's a duplication of existing that we have approved before, and then given, you know, the proportion, I think actually improves on the symmetry.
And I think that it is a very long view and difficult to perceive from those views. Commissioner Ginsburg.
I agree with my fellow commissioners, appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Master.
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chu.
I have a slightly different perspective on this, in that just by chance, my office has a view of this perfectly. I'm in One World Trade on the 40th floor and I look right at this. So I've often admired how beautiful this building is and the detailing and the masonry at the top of the building. This building is more spectacular at the top, definitely, and I would say that in its context, most of the people who see it are in the towers that are adjacent to it. So as Fred noted, just because it's at the top doesn't mean that it doesn't matter. I think that the detailing, honestly think it could have been more refined. The doors at the bottom makes sense because they're at the bottom, this is floating in a zone that was clearly originally intended to be a window condition and not a door condition. I do recognize that it has gone through adaptive reuse, it has been residential for a while now, but to me, this is a very important piece of the building. I could approve it if the details were more refined on the upper portion where the proposed balcony locations are above, to keep its simplicity of the original design intent.
Okay. Commissioner Ngombe.
I understand the last comment that's being made, and seeing a thinner profile potentially of actually trying to achieve what is trying to be achieved, so maybe the style of the door should be different at this level than from the one at the bottom, which is blocked by this, I guess, faux parapet or something that was turned into a parapet. Yeah, I agree, that the, maybe some attention to making it a little thinner and sleeker might be a matter.
Commissioner Wilder.
I think it's appropriate.
Okay. All right, so I think where we are is we have enough to support it as presented, we can always ask them to explore the refining, the details with the staff as an exercise in exploration, but we'll go ahead and make a motion to approve today.
In the matter of 140 West Street, the Barclay VZ Building, the individual and interior landmark, the application is to modify window assemblies and install balconies. Excuse me. Let's see, I note, I recommend approval noting that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed work will be located at the top setback of this skyscraper and will only be visible from a great distance and height from public thoroughfares, that the monumental window assemblies have been replaced over time and have featured a mix of operable and fixed lights, therefore, the proposed work will be in keeping with the pattern of change, that the proposed dark brown finished metal multi-light doors will match the monumental windows in terms of material, finish, and configuration, and will be in keeping with the existing doors located at the bottom of the window assembly in terms of operation and details, that the proposed Juliet balconies featuring glass and dark brown finished metal framing will be simple and open in design and will attach to the window framing with only a modest projection from the plane of the monumental windows, giving them a harmonious and inconspicuous presence, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of this individual landmark. I also note that the applicant may well advance this design by working closely with staff.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Nay.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Ngombe?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Your master?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
He in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved, thank you, and we're going to do one more item before lunch.
Yeah, I'm pulling this item from the agenda, which we did have scheduled for after lunch, we're going to go ahead and do that now, it's public hearing, item number nine, LPC 25-09497, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Road of Manhattan, block 530, lot 7506, 344 Bowery, and the NoHo Historic District Extension. This is a Renaissance Revival style store and loft building designed by Frank Wenemer and built in 1892 to 93, and the application is to install a painted wall mural.
My name is Claire Myers, I'm one of the representatives of the building owners. So today, we'd like to present you a mural project that would be an homage to Basquiat So first slide would be just a first visual of the location of the project site, so this is 344 Bowery located in NoHo. This is, as you can see, a district where we have a lot of diversity in terms of buildings, very vibrant neighborhood, and home to a lot of artists, namely in the 60s and 70s. We can name Basquiat, but also Andy Rahal, Cy Tombley, a lot of big names that elected homes in this neighborhood in the 70s where some loft spaces became available. They used these spaces as locals for their creation of their art, but they also decided over time to actually reside in these spaces, and so it became truly a vibrant neighborhood for artists. So as you can see, right under the big wall space, actually, the Basquiat's former workshop is located right under there. So the mural we want to create, as I said, will be an homage to Basquiat and will be created with Owen DP, he's an artist from New Zealand. He grew up surrounded by a lot of very strong figures and strong personalities, and so he has a true interest in actually create identity and researching identity, and through his work, that translated through creating very large-scale realistic portraiture and murals, so a lot of street art. He's done a lot of murals in New Zealand, but also in New York in the past, and Los Angeles. So a good example of a former, a past work of his is this mural in Brooklyn that was created in 2015. This is actually the rendering of the mural that we want to create. As you can see, it's truly a large-scale rendering of Basquiat, and this is actually something that is very important to us, and that was mindfully thought to us, it's not just a portrait, it's also a site-specific homage to one of New York's most iconic artists, an influential artist. It's painted right next to his former workshops, so it's an honor to this very neighborhood where that he shaped and that shaped him in return. And the idea with depicting his face in such a large, at such a large scale, is that we wanted to create something that is not just an artwork or that is not a canvas, but rather truly a monument. To us, this is very important because in a city where public monuments have historically excluded artists of color, this mural is an important step towards broader representation, especially in that type of neighborhood. So the goal with the mural is truly to have younger generations and people walking by ask, who is this artist, and looking up and get to know him better, rather than just have painting inspired by his work. This is another, sorry, okay, this is another, an alternate view of the block with the mural, and I'll let Guillaume talk about the.
Hi, I'm Guillaume Boucher, nice to meet you, thank you for your time. Yeah, so this is another view from the block to give you an idea, better understanding of what's going on, and actually, we can see on the bottom right, Basquiat's former workshop, actually owned by Angelina Jolie, where she set up an art gallery. So with this slide, we wanted to show you that this specific location is right in, but at the edge of No Historic District, so the red arrow is pointing the facade, so we are really at the edge of the No Historic District at this place. We looked into the municipal archive and understand that in the past, that facade in the 80s has been used for some, what appears to be probably some advertising, which is actually not what we are planning to do with this project. And we also wanted to share with you some project that in the Historic District with very modern buildings right in the neighborhood, with 48 Bond Street, 25 Bond Street, or 22nd, 22 Bond Street, giving you a better understanding of the different type of building that have been approved there. Another art installation located at 24 Bond Street, right block below. And on this, I would just would like to go back on the actual mural. So just to give you an understanding, so the project will take approximately two to three weeks to be completing, completed, using a scissor lift. So we had the approval of the small parking lot we can see at the very bottom, to be able to use a scissor lift to do the painting. It will cover approximately 50% of the facade. The wall is already coated with old base paint, and the paint we'll use will be acrylic based aerosol paint. And to conclude, I can say that Owen views his exterior works as one that would age like Renaissance painting, forever changing and maturing like a fine wine, as the wall would not be repainted. Although works can last decades, they are temporal, which is their true powers of life. They are to be enjoyed where they are. And this is it.
Okay. So Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Did I understand you to say that this will not be retouched or repainted?
No.
And so how long do you expect this to be up there?
It lasts for decades and ages like fine wine.
All right, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Why don't other graffiti artists or other artists don't get to it?
Yeah.
So I, so I have two questions. One is, is the acrylic paint you're planning to use a breathable masonry paint?
A what, sorry?
Breathable masonry paint.
Yes, yes it is.
It is, okay, good. The other thing is, you do not control the parking lot next to it, so at any time, someone could build a building and block part or all of this.
That would be very unfortunate, yes, but as you can see, it's a very, very small, very small lot.
Right, thank you.
Probably it is very small.
All right, Commissioner Master.
This is a question for Sarah. What do we typically allow in terms of percentage of facade with art?
Okay, so, you know, we don't see as many applications for art, we see applications for painted wall signs, advertising signs, and the commission has, over time, developed a policy, which is actually now codified into a rule, for painted advertising signs on undeveloped side facades of buildings, and that allows for up to 20, or Corey, is it 25%? It's 20% of the visible wall surface, and that it be contained within a border and setback from the front facade and the roof line, and not cover any architectural features. So with art, we, I mean, we don't regulate the content of art, that's the artist's vision, but we can look at size, scale, relationship to building features in general, and so the commission has, I can think of at least one other instance where the commission has approved a mural on a undeveloped side wall that did not meet the criteria that we have for advertising signs, that actually was larger and sort of more spread out. And then again, in this particular district, which the designation report notes, the sort of artist history, and also the new and very contemporary buildings that were being constructed around the time of designation, and the variety, the commission has approved other kinds of artwork, like the sculpture that was shown at, I think it was 24 Bond Street. So we have approved other types of art on facades here. That helps. Okay. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Wilder.
Follow up to your statement, is there anything about where it can be located? You mentioned 20% for signage, but is there anything about where it can be located?
Yeah, it's generally that it be setback three to five feet from the front facade and down from the roof level, so that it doesn't lead into the front where really the architectural features are, and therefore won't attract from those features.
So not necessarily related to this actual side facade.
Right. Corey, is there anything I missed? Okay.
What was the percentage?
Fifty.
Fifty percent? Okay. All right, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
Scale appropriate?
That's for you to determine.
It's not a sign.
It's not a sign, and we can think about it differently than a sign. Yeah, yeah, we can think about it differently than we would a sign, and as I mentioned, in, I think it was Madison Square North, or Ladies Mile, Madison Square North, where we approved a mural that was, that didn't meet that criteria and was larger than would be allowed for a sign.
Sarah, if I could just say the other, the other sort of unusual aspect of this application, in addition to its size and whatever, is that it's the application, the applicants are not proposing to maintain it or repaint it, so tended to, you know, fade over time, and which is not typically what we are reviewing. Acting when we review stuff that it will be continued to be replaced, you know, and maintained over time.
Right, but, so it would sort of fade over time like some of the ghost advertising signs that we see in districts. But I think you can think about that in terms of its impact on the architecture or the district as a whole. The fact that it might be more muted in the future.
Just one quick thing to note too, I did pull up the presentation from the other mural that we approved for Madison Square North. It was a sign that had Nomad written on it with a lot of imagery. Ultimately, it was a large Victorian lady with different graphics that superimposed on top of that. But including the white background, it covered the entire sort of front section of that secondary facade. And the graphics themselves probably covered fifty to seventy-five percent of it. So just looking at that right now.
Other questions? Okay, and I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, but I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any members of the public who would like to testify on Zoom.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson. I'll be promoting to panelist, after which we request for you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello commissioners, my name is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic Districts Council. HTC is unclear about the rules and permanence of such a mural as it depicts a work of art and not an advertisement, but we believe that it is inappropriate in scale. We feel that the size of this mural dominates the view of this historic district and are concerned about the precedent of such a large scale piece of art. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Aleah Lehman.
Good morning or good afternoon commissioners. Aleah Lehman for the Victorian Society, New York. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone think this mural calls undue attention to itself? We do. Recognition of an artist does not need to come in the form of a giant artwork by someone else. Basquiat's presence in this neighborhood is already documented by the plaque on the actual building where he worked on Great Jones. The applicant states that Basquiat's fans are well aware of the connection to this building in Great Jones. However, Basquiat had no known connection to three forty-four Bowery. Basquiat is already very well represented in museums worldwide. The proposed sign does not follow any of the LPC guidelines for painted wall signs in historic districts. It is overwhelmingly large. It seems designed more to be a celebration and display of this artist's style and ability rather than the legacy of Basquiat. Sorry, I don't have my. Aside from the inappropriateness of this work to the historic district, we note that as a work of art rather than as an advertising sign, once installed, it may be protected by law with the possibility that it can never be removed. This should be investigated as well as the potential effect on future alterations to the adjacent vacant lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, our next speaker will be Deborah Y. Deborah Y. has been promoted to panelist and may provide testimony now.
I'm Deborah Y. representing the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative. We learned only yesterday after we submitted our testimony letter that the mural design had changed. We still prefer the more evocative first version. The Lower East Side Preservation Initiative has no objection to the installation of a painted wall mural at the referenced property as murals have a long history as advertisements and more recently as artworks. Although we understand the LPC does not regulate the content of wall murals, we applaud the applicant's homage to Jean-Michel Basquiat, who is among the most important artists to work within the Lower East Side. This area, rich in cultural and architectural history, warrants heightened recognition and preservation. An artistic intervention such as this makes a singular contribution to its unique sense of place. Let's be notes that LPC's material checklist, referring to the first version, asks the applicant to consider setting the image back from the facade. We believe the full bleed is crucial to the portrait's power and meaning with the effect that Basquiat's spirit appears to permeate the surrounding neighborhood. Set back, the image would function as a more conventional portrait. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends denial.
Right, thank you. And, and before I turn back to the applicants, I just want to note one thing in response to testimony about the permanence of the artwork with all artwork that we approve, particularly on a temporary basis. The commission does require a waiver from the artist waiving any rights to maintain it in perpetuity should it be time for it to be removed or expired. But I will ask the applicants if you'd like to respond to any of the other comments. I know the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative commented on an earlier proposal that led on to, toward the front facade. And I think you changed that in response to the community board's, the community board meeting. But if you'd like to address that or any other comments at this time, you're welcome to.
Regarding the, the placement of the artwork that was mainly for regulation purposes, then I think one thing that was mentioned was the fact that Basquiat's presence was already very strong in the neighborhood. But in the, in the speech, something that was said was that it was known among Basquiat's fan. And I think it's the whole purpose of the mural to get him known not to, among Basquiat's friend, but among the larger public and especially the younger generations and not people that are going to go to museums and are going to know his existence from scratch. So yeah, that would be my only comment to this statement.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other final, yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
This is a question for council. Would, once this art, art was up, would that have any impact on the adjacent property if they decided to build a building on it? No, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Wilder.
Was there ever approval for the artwork at fifty-seven Great Jones?
No, that seems to not be a commission approval. All right, any other final questions? All right, then let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Nkwebe, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, all right, so we're looking at the application. The hearing is closed and we're looking at the, did I say aye? Did everybody say aye?
Snuck it in.
So we're looking at this mural and as we've said, we have criteria for advertising signs that limited, limits the size and placement of the sign. But we have approved art that exceeds those size limits and requirements in other districts. And we've approved art as well, other types of art installations in this particular historic district because the designation report and on the basis of the fact that the designation report speaks to the artist's history in these, in the two NoHo historic districts and, and also the variety of building types since there was a sort of revival, revitalization of the neighborhood and new contemporary architecture being constructed. And so the reports really speak to that type of variety in these districts and, and being part of the sense of place. And so we'll have a discussion about this mural, not its content, but its general parameters, its size, location. And we can also consider the fact that, as the applicant pointed out, that it is on the edge of the historic district and only two other buildings on this street are within that district. Commissioner Chen, would you start this one?
This is a very interesting one. You know, there's, you know, this is not something normally we, we regulate. And so I think I'll be interested to hear what the rest of the commissioners think. This is a, a very large artwork and it, it dominates. And to me, I think that the word maybe, you know, really you cannot avoid the presence, especially driving south on the avenue, this is the first thing you see on this corner, even though it's on the edge of the, the district. So I, I don't even know how to begin to, you know, on one hand, we have to decide whether we want to, you know, the, the suggestion of, you know, like a typical commercial sign moving it back or something like that. But I think with this commission now, this is the first time that I'm seeing something of an artwork to say either you, you, you deem it appropriate and use it. And the other thing, the, the element that is, that we need to discuss is obviously this element of not maintaining it and then letting it fade. And so there's a, a effect, you know, we look at good architecture, building age well versus building that do not age well and how it would be viewed under different condition and different, different phases of, of the lifecycle of a building. So this one is, to me is, is, you know, I think either the commission had to pick it as is or, and so I would love to hear that the rest of the commission.
And with respect to the, you know, sort of intentional aging of the paint, I think that in some ways, you know, it's true, it's, it won't be maintained. But in some ways, it would, I think, become more muted and maybe have a less of a dominant feeling in the future. And so I think it's something we can think about as possibly a positive here and also would make it sort of evocative of some of those old painted wall signs that are legible still. Commissioner Ginsburg?
This is a very interesting application. And I'm going to be curious, this commissioner. Chen had said what my fellow commissioners think. I, I actually like the fact that it will fade over time and like a lot of the historic signs we see become a ghost of what it was. I also think, because it's really facing, not facing the historic district makes it more appropriate. But when done initially, it will be big and bold and somewhat distracting. So I think I can vote for it, but I'm somewhat on the fence and interested what my fellow commissioners say.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson.
I think in this context, you, in, in this question, you have to look at the context. The context is really kind of lively and, and can absorb a large scale image. And the question of, and the, the person itself was a large image. So the context can absorb this image of that person. I do think the, the scale is appropriate. And I, I kind of, to soften the colors, I don't know how you would soften that color or reduce it in value or whatever. I think, I think it works in because of the context.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Master.
Yes, this is very interesting. So a couple of things that I would think about is that it is a secondary facade and it is at the limit, at the border of the historic district. So a lot of the viewpoints of this, of this artwork would really be coming outside of the historic district. The other thing I think is that it, this is artwork celebrating a, a cultural artistic figure that was important, you know, in this area, rather than an advertisement, which is something that we do have very strict limits for. And I like that over time, it's going to fade. So it's not going to be as bold as it is now. Initially, I did think, should we basically reduce the scale slightly to make it less bold? However, the more I look at it, I realize that reducing the scale kind of takes away from the artwork. So because of those reasons, I can find it appropriate as is.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I think that this proposal poses a really interesting question for us. I have to say that although we're, the commission does not adjudicate based on the content of the work, it is impossible for me to not notice that. And because I'm in favor of the content that also alters my opinion and that, you know, if we think about what could come in the future, if it were a person that I didn't, wasn't in favor of, I might change the scale. So it's a, this is, this is in a really tough situation. Although I do say that this, the, the person that's been selected Basquiat does have significance to the history of this historic district, which I think is unusual here. And, and the relevance of the work is specific to its place. I like the composition and as, as Jeannie, as, as Angie has said, the, the location as a secondary facade setback from the corner empty lot does help it not be as noticeable, but the point is to notice it. The fading quality that was discussed, I think, is a positive, definitely. I think that, that the applicant realizes this. I think that's an aesthetic they actually are looking for. I wondered whether or not it could start as a little bit faded. That, that was the question that I had in my mind. There's definitely power in this as a faded image as well. Debating how much it's vibrant or faded is, is it also a tough thing. But I, I think overall, looking at the way it's been portrayed, I like the composition. I like even how the windows populate the hair and the face. I think it's really interesting. In this case, for this artwork, I find it appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Nkwebe.
I find it interesting trying to create in my mind what the criteria to actually judge this actually is. As everyone has been stating, it's bold, it's lively, it's there. It's, there's things about it being in the district where it's located. It's also this potential of it, I guess in this essence, kind of giving itself a patina over time. So. I, I really. I'm, I'm struggling with this. But then again, I, I do like it. I, I do enjoy its composition and just how, I do enjoy its boldness. So I guess I'm, I'm good.
Commissioner Wilder?
All interesting points from everyone. I was actually at Great Jones a couple of weeks ago for a lecture, which I had no idea this was coming. So I find that interesting just in my, in trying to make sure I was at the right location and, and all of those things. So the one thing I do think and agree is that it does dominate the corner, right? But I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. It doesn't dominate the district, right? So if we think about the entire district, and I'm looking at the map, it's probably one of the few areas where you see as little of the rest of the buildings in the area as possible. So it's almost, in my opinion, a perfect fit for where you would locate it as also in relation to kind of paying homage to the actual workshop, which now it becomes almost a, a sign for that location, which, which highlights its location and its history, which I think brings more attention to the area that does have some historic buildings as well as contemporary buildings, which have already been noted. I'm also looking at the surrounding walls around. And this is a large. And this is a large blank wall, which almost anything could go there. And so I think it would detract other maybe unwanted art that could potentially be there. So I think it's a good solution in that manner. It would be interesting to see what it looks like over time. I'm not sure whether I think it's a good idea or a bad idea to see how it fades because of the boldness and the richness of the colors. And I think he was an iconic figure that should be celebrated as much as possible. And so I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing. The other thing about, and something I did question, which I think Commissioner Ginsburg mentioned, the thought of a new building being there, which I'm not sure what the code says, but I know, I don't think lot line windows can be blocked.
They can be.
They can be? Oh, wow. Ooh, that would be bad. Which also, would we kind of to what Erasmus was saying, how, the way we would, the way we would kind of ensure that a building maintains its, like stop it from deteriorating, would that be, like, this is going to set a precedent, right? The approval of this would possibly set a precedent that even if they didn't mention that it would fade over time, would we want it to stay like it is or would we want it to fade? And I'm not sure if that is something that should be required or not. But yeah, I'm starting to ramble. But it's just so much a response to what's in front of us. But I think it's appropriate.
And Vice Chair Bland?
Most unusual and most fabulous. I think this is just wonderful. And why is it appropriate? Because maybe fabulous is not exactly the adjective we need to describe it. I think a lot of it, Commissioner Jefferson brought up the context and others have mentioned it. And I think that's an important part. Not only is it at the edge, but it also is part of an assemblage of side walls that kind of dominate, particularly in this view. And these walls are not beautiful. And I think, you know, putting something on them is almost like begging something to be there. I think the fading aspect is a wonderful quality. I think over time, it will fade probably as has been suggested by the artist. And I think that's a good thing. My hope, well, first of all, I rue the day that a developer has the nerve to come and put a building there. But it could have happened. We're in New York. But also, you know, this whole surrounding is surrounded with graffiti. I'm not a fan of graffiti. I've just returned from Prague, of all beautiful cities. It's filled with graffiti. The greatest American export of the last half-century, I think, is graffiti. And maybe having such a brilliant piece of art right here would deter the graffiti artists from at least this area and stay away from it. So I think it's, I think it's just altogether wonderful and appropriate.
Right, all right. So Commissioner Chen, I think we have a consensus of support. Are you comfortable making that motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just before I go, as a technique for whenever we see a photograph that sometime may not to, you know, one of the techniques is that you can make it monochrome, black and white. And so I would defer that to the artist with a, you know, rather than. But I see Fred likes it the way it is. Okay, I'll read the, I'll read the. This is. In a matter of LPC 25-09497, 343 Bowery, NoHo Historic District Extension, the application is to install a painted wall mural. Noting the building's style, scale, materials, and details are getting the features that contribute, among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the NoHo Historic District Extension. Further noting that some of the New York's most celebrated artists in the latter part of the 20th century lived and worked in the NoHo Historic District and its extension, which continue to serve as a center for the visual and performing arts, which several art galleries, with several art galleries and theaters. I recommend approval finding that the proposed work will not obstruct or damage any significant architectural features, that the proposed mural will celebrate the legacy of artist culture written within this section of the historic district, which include the residence and studio of Michel Batsis and others, working artists, that the historic district features other exterior art installations and vibrant mix of contemporary. And the historic district features historic buildings and structures giving an eclectic character that is supportive of the installation of this type, that the mural will be painted on plain masonry at a secondary facade with a breathable and reversible paint and that the artist's intent is to allow it to fade over time, which will soften its presence consistent with the historic ghost signs, that the mural will be located at the boundary of the historic district and directly, and not directly aligned with the front facade of this building or other buildings within the historic district. And it will be seen above a vacant lot from outside the district and therefore will not disrupt a prominent or highly unified historic street skate composition. That the scale of the mural, when seen between the six-story and taller blanking facades, will not overwhelm the historic buildings.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Ed Mark, will you call the vote?
Here, Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Nkwenbe?
Aye.
Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Masterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And Commissioners, we're going to have a break for lunch now. It's 12:30. We'll come back at 1:15.